All right, I've got six o'clock, so we will go ahead and get started. Thank you for joining us tonight. We're going to begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first on tonight's agenda is our Consent Agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
An exception. Can we pull out the legal fees? So everything else, I guess.
The estimated bills for December?
Yeah.
So, motion made by trustee Garrity to remove the estimated bills for 2024 from the financial report, correct?
Um, I would just, those could just be removed and then just vote approved separately.
Okay.
A second.
All right, any hearing motion and a second, any discussion?
So, you don't have to vote to take it out. Anybody can ask to vote.
That's what.
Yeah. But was that for the, to approve everything else, or no? Not yet?
Yeah, I move to approve everything except the legal fees.
Perfect, gotcha.
All right, so we can go to roll call vote with one or two trustees. I will be voting tonight to ensure we have quorum. So trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Garrity.
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
So you only still have to vote in a tie? Quorum is if there are three of you here?
Okay.
So it's just if there were a tie?
Two is the vision votes to pass and a motion.
Yep.
Perfect. All right, so do we now discuss what was pulled out? Okay, go for it.
So, Mary Miller was kind enough to break apart the legal fees from Stiren and Schilling. One part of the invoice was the legal fees, the normal, I guess it's the normal contracted fees per month.
And a portion of that last month.
And you prorated the last month, I saw that. Thank you. That's signed and approved. The other one was legal fees for the lawsuit, 10.5 hours, I believe. And I don't think any of us requested those hours. So, I don't think we should pay them.
So I think that, that sounds like a question for discussion is what was requested according to Mr. Stiren's contract? In my review, it sounded like that the contract states, and I quote, "If Mr. Stiren feels that he's been asked to perform services outside the scope of a $500 flat fee, he will promptly notify the library director." So I believe we talked about this when they, were you contacted by Mr. Stiren that the services are outside of the scope of his flat fee? No. Okay. And then his contract further states, "Mr. Stiren will work with the director to establish a budget for additional services." So I assume the answer is also no, that we did not receive a budget for the additional, correct, 10.5 hours of services? So I don't know if it's appropriate, if we wanted to ask Mr. Stiren to provide additional documentation. Diana, do you have thoughts? Would be standard.
Can we ask who asked for the hours? I mean, because the board didn't.
Yeah, I think we ought to give him a chance to justify it.
Sure. Specific questions you want me to ask him?
Yeah, the question is, who commissioned him to do that legal work?
And then I think the follow-up question would be then, what notice did he provide? And what budget did he provide for that legal work? According to his contract? So do we recommend a motion to table that sole check till we receive that information?
I think you can approve the anticipated bills with the exception of that one check.
Basically approve the part that was in the contract and end the rest.
Right, but you need to approve like all of this as a document. So, yeah, all of the estimate, the estimated bills is what we call it on the agenda. So approve those with the exception of that one one.
Okay. So approve the estimated bills except for the 41, 62, 50 for Stiren and Schilling.
It's just the portion of that.
Or revise the amount due to them to take out the 10 hours.
Yes.
Got it, okay.
It's a $1,312.50.
Perfect.
So approve 13, 12, 50?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna hold the 13, 12, 50 until we hear back from hearing.
Okay, and approve the.
The 28, 50 was for the five, approximately 5.7 months at the $500 monthly rate.
Okay, so approve 28, 50 in November 21st.
So Diana, I would have Diana then move to pay the estimated bills with the exception of the 13, 12, 50.
Yeah, the amount to be paid is $2,850. Pull it out.
Oh, $2,850, okay.
Yeah, 28, 50, and then hold the remaining 13, 50.
So editing, revising the estimated bills to that amount.
Yep, gotcha.
All right, so Diana, if you're making that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I didn't know if this was a separate motion. All right, well, I don't think there's additional discussion, so we can move to roll call vote. Trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Garrity.
Aye.
Hearing that, motion carries.
I'm putting that with the other checks, and I'll lock it out.
I'll put them all in there.
You go sign it, and I'll lock that one.
Thank you, Mary. All right, next on the agenda was administrative highlights, but it doesn't look like you had any for this month.
No, not.
All right, with that, we will move into the public comment portion of our meeting tonight. I know a few of the speakers do have handouts, since we have so few. We all have plenty of time to make sure everyone can turn in their handouts. Appreciate you preparing those in advance and then still have your three minutes to speak, so I think we'll have sufficient time with our hour that we have available. So with that, we will move into the public comment. First up is David Rice. Following after that is Juanita.
I do not have a handout, sir.
That's okay.
Yeah, go for it.
So, I know that we've been talking about labeling books. I want to say we should not do that. I think that would be a bad decision. I want to talk about the Missouri Code and Regis, uh, the Missouri Code, Section 15 CSR, library certification requirement for the protection of minors. I'm just gonna read the law. Nowwithstanding provision of 15 CSR, and I'm not gonna read all the codes, to the contrary, the state librarian shall not distribute any funds to any library defined in 15 CSR that receives funds pursuant to 15 CSR and 15 CSR unless such library certifies in writing each of the following. A, the library has or will adopt a written publicly accessible collection development policy addressing how selections are made and considering the appropriateness by age of any minor as defined in 15 CSR 30-200.030. No funds received, chuffed, used, purchased, or acquired material that constitutes child pornography is pornographic for minors or is obscene as those terms are defined in Section 573.010 RSMO. The library has or will adopt a written publicly accessible policy allowing a minor's parent or guardian to determine what materials and access will be available to that minor, and no person employed, buying, or acting on behalf of the library shall knowingly grant access to a minor to any material in any form not approved by that minor's parent or guardian. No Asian inappropriate materials in any form as defined in the library's collection development policy shall be knowingly displayed in the library in areas designated by the library as containing materials predominantly for minors. No event or presentation shall be held at the library without an age-appropriate designation affixed to any publication, website, or advertisement for such event or and/or presentation. The library has or will adopt a written publicly accessible library materials challenge policy by which any parent or guardian of a minor within the library district may dispute or challenge the library's age-appropriate designation affixed to any presentation, event, material, or display in the library, and the results of any such dispute or challenge shall be disclosed to the public and published on the library's website. The library shall submit a copy of its written policies to the state librarian annually by July 31st, and shall submit within 30 days any revisions to such policies to the state librarian. Now, this regards funds, and so the state librarian can remove funds from the library. I don't know if they've done that for any of the libraries in the state of Missouri. I think as we move forward and develop our policies, I think it's important that we follow the law and not add to the law or take away from the law. It is important that we don't add labels that would add lawfare into our community. Thank you.
All right, next up is Juanita, and following that, Kevin.
Welcome, Mary, to the Library Board of Trustees. I've known Mary Hernandez de Carl for a while, and I know that she's sensible and pragmatic with excellent judgment and people skills. I'm so pleased that the area homeschool community, which is growing by leaps and bounds, now has a strong voice on the board who will be able to identify with their very unique needs and requests. Mary will be a voice for my daughter, and her children, and Deborah, and her children, and so many others. My daughter stopped bringing her children into the library over a year ago when it became apparent that repeated requests from citizens to the Board of Trustees asking that they deal with the unregulated age-inappropriate materials in the kids' sections were being ignored. This request for identification had nothing to do with racism, or bigotry, or hatred of others, which is what loud woke voices kept insisting. It had to do with parents taking charge of their right to control the narrative of what materials their kids take in, see, read, and have access to. This is not book banning or restricting access as some left-wing organizations and biased online media is heralding. That is a bald-faced lie. A journalist with dubious fact-checking in multiple eras in her articles made this accusation against Mary in an article on Thursday. For the record, we are not promoting restricting access, and that is not an inference that I have ever heard Mary imply or speak. Other taxpaying Christian county citizens are free to check out and read whatever they want, in my opinion. We are simply asking the library to present those books to the general public in an appropriate way that helps parents and families to establish clear, safe boundaries of library browsing for their children. This is each parent's individual right and responsibility for their own family. No loud self-righteous bully has the right to shove those books purposely in other children's faces just because they think they have the moral high ground to do so. Andy Wilson is the owner of Katz Canon Press Publishing Company. His philosophy illustrates this point beautifully. He said that children's loves, opinions on behaviors that are acceptable and unacceptable, loyalties, and even disloyalties are shaped from earliest childhoods, sitting on their parents' laps as they're read to. As they hear and read those stories, the books that children see and ingest shape and mold their views of the world. The point is this, yes, other taxpaying adults have every right to access those books that many consider to be counter-cultural and are age-inappropriate for children. They even have the right to check them out and read them to their own kids, but their rights end at the point where they insist that those sexualized, age-inappropriate books be shut down our throats, apparently in order to validate something within themselves. My final thought, if someone on the previous board would have actually listened and tried to compromise over the last couple of years, I think that things would have turned out very differently. But now it's time to accept a peaceful transition and start to move forward with reasonable compromise. The people's elected representatives have spoken.
Kevin, you're up. Elizabeth, you're up next.
The conversations in media has been kinda odd lately. There's been a lot of things that just really didn't happen, and Juanita kinda mentioned a lot of that, but book banning and book burning, that's not anything anybody here's asked for. All we've asked for is for inappropriate literature to be kept from in front of our children. And it's not so much the literature, that is a big part of it, but it's absolutely absurd that the pictures I've seen in some of these books would ever be accepted, even in a gas station bookshelf. That would be, a gas station would be shut down, then people would be arrested if they put some of the stuff I've seen in here. But anyway, the, a couple of years ago when this all started, all that was asked was that stuff be taken away from the shelves, away from our children and our youth, and put somewhere, and it was a reasonable compromise, was not meant met. It was basically met with obstruction. The board members refused to compromise anyway. The board members would not allow any conversation with the public. The board members offered no solution, and the library staff as well. Everybody talked to them, and reasonable conversations were had, but nobody would ever even talk to us about those things. Well, now we've got four board members that aren't it. There's one more left, and you know what? I think that's a pretty good indication that we're on a good path. We've, I think we've reached a milestone here, and as far as compromise, I think we passed that, and I don't think there's any compromise on where we're going. We've got some good board members now, and they're here to go ahead and set things right. They're communicating with everybody, and nobody's being told they can't have what they want, they're just being told to keep it away from our kids. And I'm confident that's gonna be set in place. Mary, I am so sorry for the way you've been treated in this. I really appreciate the fact you went ahead and stepped up, and the thing I'm looking forward to more than anything is the way you conduct yourself, you're very professional, and you, you're a lady, and I'll tell you what, I saw in one article where somebody said they were holding it against you that you weren't from here. Well, I got to know Mary just enough to know that she very much fits in our community. She is a neat lady, she's a great mom, and when she came here, one of the things she realized was how important it was for our community to work together. And she's always looking for a compromise in a way to get along. And one of my favorite things about Mary is she's a second, or she's a first-generation immigrant. Her parents were raised her, they managed to raise her here in the greatest country ever was, and Mary appreciates that, and she understands the freedom that we have. And I look forward to your input on this, Mary, and I just thank you so much, and be patient with us. You know what, we're not all on reen meeting, but it should go pretty well once we get a few weeks behind us here.
Elizabeth, you're up, and then Sherry.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth, and I am woke. I want to say thank you to Renee, Nicholas, Tori, and all of the staff members here in our library system who have done such great work over the past several years. I moved here 10 years ago, and I moved here with hope. Hope that my children would go to the best school system that I could give them, and hope that I would learn to be comfortable in a community where I am stuck by golden handcuffs, but not just stuck, wanted to be here. Let's talk about a few things before you go into the next new year. Compromise does not mean you get what you want. So let's talk about the law for a second. In the law, when it comes to books, there is the Miller test, and by now, I'm assuming you all are familiar with it. There is no book that is sold in our stores, or loaned in our libraries, made available in our school libraries, or even our universities, that have not passed the Miller test, which means that every single one of them has import and has interest, and based on that law of obscenity that was made before I was born, has been the compromise that we have agreed on. When I came here, I had hope. I had hope that I would enjoy working with the people in my community, and in the past 12 months, I have been chastised, called out, threatened, my organizations have been criticized, falsities have been spread about my organization, and maybe that's okay with everybody, but misinformation and misattribution to persons or groups is not okay. And it's never going to be okay if citizens are gonna trust each other enough to have a good community. One year ago, at this meeting in December of 2023, a member of the community said, "We should be rioting in the streets," quote, "against the library." And that day, I said to myself, "No, we're gonna, we're gonna fight. I've got hope that we can change that." I stand here 12 months later, fearful. Fearful because we have not come to any more agreement, we're not following the laws that we've been following for decades, and we're too busy thinking what we think is right, is what should be the law of the land.
Sherry, you're our final speaker.
This was a due presentation. Like I said, my name is Sherry Leonard. I'm a registered nurse, and I work in Springfield, but my home is here in Sparta, and I do thank you for listening to me this afternoon and giving me the time to speak and express my concerns tonight. Spent many hours trying out the Christian County Library and various resources to determine how they might be of help to parents and guardians that make information and decisions about certain things for their children and what they encounter. While at this time, investment was not realistic, and particularly for the average library visit, I did so to illustrate the problem. I hope to encourage you to continue your journey to succeed successfully, help with solutions. Families walking into the Sparta branch with a preschooler would like to find the colorful book Worm Loves Worm appealing due to its cute little illustration and target readers between the ages of three and five. However, there is no clear indication that this contains LGBTQ content, which it may contain concerned families with certain traditional Christian values. Even when thumbing through these pages, it's not immediately apparent that this book depicts the same-sex marriage. I examined what the CCL staff may have proposed to help parents make informed choices, but found them very lacking. The parent or guardian wrote resources pages on the CCL website that some parents may not even be aware of the states under the mounting content. Eight total solutions. All six applicable solutions failed to provide adequate information or resources to identify the content of this book that is concerning. The other two solutions did not apply to tools for evaluating the content of the book on the shelf. The CCL catalog, subject headings and genre information fall to the highlight of the LGBT themes for people that evaluate a book by its cover. Placing the book in the children's picture book section doesn't imply that parents must screen it for the same-sex marriage content. The recommendations, external resources like Common Sense Media and Kirkus Review don't clarify the same-sex marriage aspect upfront, only by going out to see what fellow parents, fellow parents, and guardians had taken the time to write a little information on Amazon reviews, which did confirm my concerns and see other parents and guardians expressing the need to content warnings. In conclusion, the resources provided by the CCL are inadequate by parents seeking to make real-time decisions about the content their children are encountering. The current system places the unrealistic burden on families to extensively research each book, and the library wishes to empower parents to guide their children in reading the choices based on the values it must implement practical solutions like clear content labeling.
Thank you. All right, that is the end of our public comment section. All right, the next item on our agenda tonight is old business, starting with resource sharing software update with Renee.
Yeah, I wrote out all of the update I have, and I'll just go through it real quickly. If you have questions, let me know. We did receive the refund check from Mobius a couple of weeks ago, and we are making progress on the enhancements to our OCLC requests. So we did confirm that there's no additional cost for us. That was a little up in the air last month when I gave an update. We have staff testing and training in progress and documentation in progress, and we're gonna self-launch with a few of our power users in the next few weeks to make sure the workflow is working as we should, and then we're gonna start promoting it more widely in January so that people can make use of the improved workflows to get loans from other libraries. And then as far as the Mobius migration, they're continuing progress on development. There's been several emails this week that I haven't had a chance to digest, but I suspect probably a little bit of a lull over the next couple of weeks with the holidays, but I do have a meeting scheduled with one of the developers to kinda talk about what a timeline would look for us to go live, and we may go live before Springfield Green goes live, even though we're on a shared server, for us to see how it works, because our volume is much less than Springfield Green's. We actually might be a good candidate to see how it goes and help them make the decision about going forward. So I will have more information for sure next month. I don't know about a timeline, but we're continuing to talk through this.
Thank you for the updates. Questions, Renee? You mentioned that you were still going through the emails, updates from them. Do you know, did they indicate if this was beta testing that they're pushing now?
Well, so some libraries are live on it, so it would be, we would be in the live production environment, but we would not promote it widely that we are live because we wanna kinda manage our flow of requests if we do go live.
Sure. Any other questions?
I guess, so if we decide that we don't like the new version, is there an escape clause? Is there a 30-day quid pro quo?
I think, based upon how things have been going, I think we can just say we're not gonna rejoin, and the agreements are, like typically you have to give a year's notice, but because of the change in software, they are not enforcing that because it's a change in the service they're providing. So they'll work with us to work through that.
All right, thank you. The next item we had under old business was the first two bylaws revisions, second reading of Article 5, Order of Business.
So this is the first time, do we need to do a second, do we need to read it again?
Yep. If you want, I could read it.
Please.
Has, have you had a chance to look at it? Does anybody have any changes that you know of? It's this one, the, here, I can go down actually, I should.
I've got it.
The green part?
Yep.
Okay. Public here, sorry guys, okay. Proposed new version, Article 5, Order of Business, Section 1. The library's executive director or designee shall be held responsible for preparing an agenda of business and packet of materials for consent agenda items for each regular meeting and sending it to the library board members at least seven days prior to the meeting so that there's time to review and make edits before the 24-hour notice to the public. In preparing the agenda, the executive director shall obtain the approval of the board president or designee before publicly posting notice. Section 2, the agenda of business shall always include, but not be limited to, the following items: Pledge of Allegiance, attendance, minutes of last meeting for approval, public comments, financial report, report of the executive director, new business, and adjournment. And I can't show it on that screen, but you guys can see if there's any, yeah.
Need a motion?
We would take a motion, that is our second reading.
Yep.
I move that we accept this reading as it was presented last time.
Second. I think we have a motion to approve Article 5 as written in its second reading, and a second, any discussion, any further discussion?
I think we covered it at the last meeting.
Yeah, I think we did, there was a lot of discussion last night, so. All right, we will move to a roll call vote. Trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Garrity.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, the next item on the agenda is bylaw revisions. All right, the next item on the agenda is bylaw revisions, first reading. And this was tabled at the November meeting, so it's Article 8, scope of authority. That's the next page in our packet.
This first page is the current version, right?
Yeah, so I kind of tried to put everything since you're discussing it. The first one is the current, separate from everything. Then we put the excerpt from the Secretary of State trustee manual, that that was taken from a previous board, asked us to distill that into a new section. And then John's document that he gave last time, as it was when he gave it. And then Echo's suggested addition of the facilities. I just kind of screenshot and put on there, so it's smaller.
Okay.
Sure, thank you.
So I went through the RSMO 182 and kind of took out what the scope of the library board of trustees has ownership of. And then I saw there was a suggestion to add facilities. It's, I think it's fine to put it in, because it's implied that the trustees are responsible for all resources of the library, of which the facilities is one of those resources. So.
Yeah, if it's overkill, I'm not opposed to things.
Wasn't that in there, because we suggested to add that, because that talks about facilities in the statute?
Yeah, I think you see it in maybe the city statutes or some of the other statutes, where they specifically talk about purchasing land and leases and things like that. You'll see it in those.
In the city libraries as opposed to the county libraries.
Right.
I do think this language is in the county library one, so I think it's pretty similar.
It's in 182, right?
Yes.
So do we want to add the facilities piece?
I think so.
If it's in the county portion, I think it's an appropriate addition.
It's not in the county part, I'll tell you that. It's not specifically outlined in the county part of the statute. But it is implied, so.
What was the subsection?
As long as we're not, Diane, we're not inconsistent with law, though, right? I mean.
No, I don't think so. Hold on, I'm trying to, which, which part of 182 am I?
18260. Why do I know that?
I don't know why I was about to ask you that. You told me you read this a few times. Maybe right, maybe it was, because this 18260 is really, it ain't got much in it. General powers of district.
It just basically, the scope is, shall make and adopt such bylaws, rules, and regulations for their own guidance, as may be expedient, not inconsistent with law for the government of the library and in general, shall carry out the spirit and intent of the sections 18210 through 182120. And there's a lot of things in there that don't specifically have anything to do with facilities.
Yeah, and then if you go into point 70.
70?
Yeah, if you go to 70, it's.
Entering into leases and things?
Yeah, may sue and be sued, complain and defend, and make and use a common seal, purchase or lease grounds, purchase/lease, occupy or direct appropriate building. They're of, out of current funds, the funds are available. Sell, convey, lease, exchange, transfer, or otherwise dispose of all or any part of its real or personal property or any interest there, income or other assets wherever situated, or on behalf of the county library. Right, okay. Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm seeing in 182, so.
I don't think it hurts anything to put it in there.
I don't think so either.
And we had our attorney look at it, right? He said, I think he said it looks.
Yeah, we sent it to him on Thursday.
Yes, he said, I think he said there was nothing that he objected to. He said something about it could be fleshed out a little bit more.
Refined.
Yes, I think he said refined, so.
Did he give a suggestive language to how to refine it?
He did not. So if you want to work through that with him and take a little more time, or that's up to you guys.
I'd rather get going with it, and if we need to amend it later, we do that.
We can, yeah, I agree.
So can you find complaints of loans?
It's that next one, that page right there, right after your, right after your colored one, the one that has the echo.
Oh, there it is. There it is.
It's kind of small, because I had to screenshot it from the email.
It's not colored.
Yeah, sorry.
We certainly bring a motion, and then we will have discussion on your motion.
I move that we accept the first reading with the addition of the facilities. The board can acquire, maintain, and improve library grounds and buildings, including issuing bonds for these purposes.
And make that just an additional bullet point? Is that how you want it?
Yes.
Yeah, sure. That's all in writing, so that counts.
Second, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Further discussion on that motion? Okay, so this moves us into first reading for January, so we will have time to discuss with counsel. And then if he finds reason to continue to make modifications. If not, then we can move to second reading after that. So, all right, so we will now vote on the motion to update and take this to first reading in January, so.
Actually, we have.
No, this is first reading.
Yeah, this is first reading, but, so second reading, but we don't have, we don't have a regular meeting scheduled for January, so it'd be February.
February. So, yeah, sorry, this is first reading. Okay, so on the motion, trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now moving in our agenda to new business. First item on that agenda is equipping the library for hybrid meetings. I believe. Sorry. Trustee Garrity, you have the floor. I believe this was your item.
Oh, I just asked for some help.
Your adorable owl.
Actually, I probably should have, should have put more detailed requirements. I think this is a good start, but I also think that if we could have some audio help at the stand there and for the director, or the trustees, that would be helpful, too.
For, for you guys to hear each other better, or for the audience?
Sometimes, like when I was sitting back there, I couldn't hear you sometimes.
So amplification for even the physical, regardless of whether there's a hybrid meeting?
Right, yep. And this would, this would be for call-ins, right? So we don't have to do the Dixie Cup thing.
Right, correct. I mean, it works.
I appreciate you all.
It works. No, and we already have the owl, so this wasn't an extra expense. We had gotten that through a grant, actually, about a year ago, so. Next time, we have to, the important piece about this is just having advanced notice, because we use that for programs sometimes, so we want to make sure it's available.
And I was thinking about this. I don't know if we can do this now, but maybe this is. Because January is such a stormy month, maybe we just have an option for people to listen.
Even February, right, because we're already canceled. January, yeah, you're, you're, it's still same apply, so.
If we can do that.
Livestream, or, because that would be a little bit longer.
We don't do livestream video, right? We just, so it's, it would be audio only, right?
To livestream the audio?
So this is just an audio, right?
No, it's, it's video, too.
Oh, it has video?
Yes.
Interesting. So all we have to.
But it's not livestream. Like, it is for the person calling in, but not just to anybody.
So if we did that, would it be a Zoom call?
It would use Google Meet, so the, so like if it's Echo calling in, or whoever, which was you last month, you would have the link to call in, and so you would use your laptop or whatever, and you would see the video. The owl, we would have it connected to a laptop, and I haven't actually set it up, so I'm probably going to say it the wrong way. But the owl hears what's being said in turn and captures whoever's speaking theoretically on video, or whoever's sneezing sometimes, as the case may be. So Echo would be able to see the room and hear. It picks up the sound pretty well in this room. Tori, and he's our IT manager, had tested it out. So we could, it's probably worth, you know, trying the next time someone has to call in from the board and. We would have allowed Janice to participate tonight. She wasn't comfortable being here, but if she was up to.
You might have Janice there, depending on how available she is.
Don't like to do it there, too.
Do we need a, do we need a motion?
No, we'll just plan to have it available. So what I'd ask of you is if one of you needs to be virtual, give me as much advanced notice as possible, and we'll set this up for the next time it's needed. And do you, are you making an additional request, John, for the audio in the room?
I, I, audio for the.
So amplification.
The trustees and for the speaker, the public comment speaker. So I don't know how many we need, but there'd be a bunch.
I'll look into it and see what we can come up with.
And then we can vote, I guess we could vote on that next time.
Yeah, once we have some options, maybe.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Renee. The next item on the agenda under our new business is the Missouri Sunshine Request Notification to the Board. I did ask this item to be added, and thank you, Renee, for including it. We're 20, page 25 deep in our packet now. June, thank you again, summarizing that June, that reported to the board completion of 22 requests for the prior 12 months. And from June to December, as of, when you pulled this, it looked like we were at 14. So seeing that these are continuing or potentially increasing slightly, I'd like to just request that the board be notified when we get a sunshine request. So would you like me to just put it in my monthly board report, like how many requests I've had that month?
I'm really interested in who was sunshine. If there's sunshine in my emails, I'd like to know. I mean, I don't have any secrets, but I'd like to know if there's interest and what the scope, what the scope of it was.
Yeah, well, in my weekly emails, I could put that.
Like, you know, received a sunshine request from John Doe, and it's attached.
Can we, I don't want to intrude on people's personal information, so maybe we just know what the scope. Diane, is it inappropriate to ask to redact that or have that?
I don't know. I never, I mean, I don't, I don't.
Sunshine request in and of itself, public record.
Maybe, maybe this goes.
There we go.
It goes to Robert, let's ask, Robert.
I mean, it is a, it is a public record, a sunshine request. So, but I mean, some people might be comfortable, some might not, but. Whether or not, like, I don't know if, who is requesting matters to you, if the justice.
I think it matters.
I'll confirm with Robert.
Yeah, check with him, but, yeah, I'd like, if there's a sunshine request, I'd like to know who's making it and what it's for.
Anything else I don't believe a motion is required on that one, so. All right, next up, we're almost there. New business, the CCL memberships and professional association review. Again, thank you so much for preparing that for us. We've got in our packets an overview of the 2024 professional association memberships as a snapshot back, both at an institutional level as well as an individual level. And then there's at the bottom, the 2024 budget totals for that category, as well as the 2025 estimated budgets or approved budgets for that amount. So if you had a chance to take a look through those, if you've got any questions from what Renee was able to help pull together for us.
For the individual memberships, are those, are people paying for those, or is the library?
No, this is all what library is paying.
Okay, the library is paying for the individual memberships as well.
Yes, and the ones that I've listed here for the ALA and PLA and the Missouri Library Association that I've listed there, we only pay those individual memberships when they're attending the conference, because it gives a conference registration discount.
So this is like if you, like, just by way of example, the conference costs 150 bucks, but if you pay 50 bucks for the membership, it's only going to cost another 50, so you're.
Right.
So you're saving 50?
Right.
Okay.
I had a question on the, it looks like there's the three, four HR memberships for the public sector, human resources, the Society for Human Resource Management in the Springfield area, human resource management ones that are listed out as individual. So I wasn't sure if those were ones that Mary had, or others are individual. So Mary is the girl. Love it. Awesome. Any other questions?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm kind of confused here. So it's saying 2025 budget is 2,500, so you're not anticipating going to ALA convention in 2025?
Correct. We actually don't typically go to ALA. It's pretty expensive. PLA from 2024 was the one that staff went to, and it is, it only happens every two years. And it's more, that annual ALA conference is like public academic school, kind of everything. PLA is much more focused on public libraries, and we find it a better value for the money. So no one is going this year, because there's not a, or in 2025, because there's not a PLA conference, so.
The only other one that kind of jumps out at me is the Show Me Christian County $1,000. Can you explain what the benefit is?
Yeah. So Show Me Christian County is an economic development organization in the area, and it is a, they're focused countywide, whereas like the chambers are focused more individually on each city. So I would say, think of it as, it's different than a chamber, but similar in that they're focuses on business attraction retention and quality of life. So we have a lot of commonalities in our missions when it comes to improving the quality of life across the county. So there are people at those meetings, and you can only attend to the meetings if you are a member that are represented across the county. So I'm usually the one that attends, and we have lots of conversations. Like, I'm speaking with the mayor of Highlandville sometimes, and speaking with utility companies that are members, and there's private companies as well. So it's a good value for my time to be able to connect with a lot of people. They are pursuing a nonprofit, they are, they are a nonprofit now, but they're a CO1, C3, C4, sorry, a 501(c)(4), but they're working on getting their 501(c)(3) status to become, so that they can do grants. And we've already talked about maybe some joint grant partnerships that would be beneficial to work together, so. And they have offered in the past to come and present about the value that they bring to the library and how we partner together. So if that's something you're interested in, I could have them do that.
I wouldn't mind seeing that.
Okay, thank you, yeah. And then if you have specific questions, then I can answer them better than. They do a lot of work coordinating with some of the smaller towns and stuff, and their comprehensive plans, and that kind of gets us connected to sometimes have a library staff member sort of on a comprehensive plan committee for a smaller area that helps us really reach out to organ, company, communities that are not like where our branches are, to make inroads to those also. Appreciate you asking them to do that. All right, the last item on our agenda under new business is the Christian County Library ILS discussions, also a portion of your packet toward the end there. So from the Mobius and our ILS discussions, I've provided some of the information from Renee's various reports, as well as some research online, as well as from different discussions and online forums about libraries who've transitioned, by now. It's a lot of materials. I tried to provide it as well in advance as I could, so you have a chance to go through it. But trying to, I think my goal at this point is to, I don't think we've fully gotten to a total cost of ownership of our systems. And so, again, near and dear to my IT heart, I would really like to ensure that we have all the pieces, understand all of the categorizations of those expenses, knowing not all of them are maybe as directed, directed, we might see. So I think that's kind of the research that I've been continuing based on some of our conversations. I have given you the cost of these a couple of times, and they are, I don't think there's any cost that you're missing. It's the, on that second page of your document, that CR ILS cost unknown, that is the Coolcat catalog. It is all one thing. There is no additional cost there. So it is the Coolcat catalog and Mobius. Those are the total costs. And in that Mobius, that total 16,000, that also includes our cost for Courier, which is through Mobius, it's about $3,500. If we were in an entity like Missouri Evergreen, we would also have to pay Courier costs, and they would be a little bit higher than Mobius is. So there would be an additional cost on top of that 15,000 for Missouri Evergreen.
So there would be an additional cost on top of that 15,000 for Missouri Evergreen.
Makes sense.
Did you, you put this together?
I, yeah, pulled together as much information as we had from our previous. The other thing that jumped out at me later in some of the comparisons, and I think Renee answered my question, it looks like there's been a significant movement from libraries. I think this is in St. Louis library system away from the Polaris system. Looks like they are losing all of their customers, so I made a mental note if we were going to go to an RFP to consider that. I don't know if you have any familiar, I mean, I don't expect you to be an expert on Polaris, but half the state Missouri is moving away from it.
Well, St. Louis County and St. Louis City actually just moved to it, and they're two of the largest libraries in the state, so. I think the ones that moved away from it found, you know, the value in Missouri Evergreen. But Polaris as a product is actually one of the best in the marketplace. It is by the same company that does Sierra what we have also. They had, they were two different companies, and they were the one that owned, Sierra bought the one that developed Polaris. But they have put more development, or some development into Polaris. It's always been traditionally for public libraries, whereas Sierra has been for multi-type libraries, so. Yeah, sorry, I can talk about that a lot, but.
No, that's good. All right, so that maybe is what we're seeing in this trend, is these are smaller libraries?
I, I think so.
There's what, 10 that have moved?
And they were already, those in that municipal consortium have always, have been a consortium for a long time, so. I think, you know, they're.
They moved in mass?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Which they're still, like, they're alive now, I believe, I'm curious to see how things go, because it is a big addition to Evergreen.
So I, I found this report, someone sent it to me, 2024 Library Systems Report. I can send out the URL so that you can read it yourself. But a couple of things that jumped out were that Sierra doesn't seem to be doing any new feature development, and they're kind of not encouraging, they're not really promoting it, selling, onboarding any new customers. That makes me think that they're getting ready to migrate to something else.
Maybe, and they may be putting the development dollars into Polaris. So far, we're still getting regular updates with new features, but they have put a lot, that company has put a lot of their development into the public facing side of things. There is a new discovery layer catalog, that's called Vega. That is where they've done a lot of development into that patron experience, whereas the backend, which is Sierra for staff, works pretty well. And we don't like need a lot of new bells and whistles, but what we see more demand for is the public use and more features like what they're used to seeing in platforms like, you know, Netflix, or Goodreads, or those kinds of things, so they've put a lot of development to that. And that, that layer, Vega, can actually sit on top of either Sierra or Polaris. And Springfield Green has actually just implemented that, and that is something we might have a possibility to explore in the future if we wanted to.
Okay, so if you don't mind, sending that maybe after.
Is that Marshall Breeding, or that report, or who's that from?
It is Marshall Breeding.
Okay, yeah.
Marshall Breeding.
He is the foremost expert in library systems in the library world, and has been for like.
It's a little wide reading, I'm sure.
Yeah.
All right, so there's no other questions? It seems like you have your hand up in there, okay, any other questions?
No, I don't understand any of this stuff.
Can I just, just make a comment? Like, I, I don't have a problem with Missouri Evergreen, and I think in the future, that may be a good option for us to consider. I think we have a, in my opinion, expertise from this area, which is kind of an area that I've worked in a lot, we have the best value right now for what we've got. And looking at doing a migration is pretty disruptive to staff and patrons, so I would want to have a strong case for why we would be doing that. I'm definitely open to it, I think now is not a great time, and there are a couple of reasons. Number one, we have, you know, we're in the, halfway through a strategic plan, so we have a lot of projects we're working on. So this might be good to have discussions for in the next strategic plan. But also from a funding standpoint, Missouri Evergreen relies so heavily on funds from the state library that come through IMLS, and with changes, both there's going to be a new state librarian and a new secretary of state, plus a new president, and all three of those offices have an impact upon how those grant funds are funneled. So in another year or two, we may have a better idea of if those funds are still going to be available to help with migration costs as well as ongoing costs for this consortium. So I think my opinion would be, like, let's, we can keep talking about it, but I think it might be worth waiting a year or two to kind of see how that plays out in the future. But I'm open to your direction.
All right, thank you for that. If there's no other items on the agenda, I move that we adjourn.